I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass City Council, May 1st, 2023, at 5:30 PM. Let's all rise with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Donald.
Mayor, City Council. Father, we just thank you, Lord, for your many blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight and be about the city's business. And we just ask, Lord, well, first of all, we want to thank you for all the difficult times that you brought us through, hurricane and pandemic, and we're still standing. We just ask, Lord, that you would bring our community together. I pray that you would bind the wounds that divide us. And I pray, Lord, that our minds will be governed by your wisdom and our hearts by your love, and we would demonstrate your kindness and grace to our neighbors in our community. We ask all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No.
Did you die?
Did it die?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to go to presentations and proclamations, which is the presentation of budget calendar for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
Yeah. Oh, okay. One second. I apologize. Okay, Mayor and Council, it's that time of the year again for the budget calendar. I want to briefly go through the high points of the calendar. And so far, the council has appointed the Budget Committee member, and that's Vicky Abrego. That is accomplished already. Preliminary values are due from the Chief Appraiser, and that's happening now. And May 1st, today, is the regular session presentation of the budget calendar. Jumping ahead, May 15th is something that we have done at the local level. It is not required, but in order to give people as many opportunities as possible to comment on the budget, of course, they can do it at any council meeting, we're having the first budget public hearing on May 15th. An important meeting is May 16th, one that we've been doing for several years now, a strategic budget planning session. And this includes the mayor, council, department heads, and hopefully citizens will come in. I know citizens have come in in the past and attended those and made requests on such things as streets, for example, and it's worked out well. That's on June 16th, we'll be doing that. Generally, that's a Friday, so I'm assuming that also is a Friday. And jumping down now to the issue of the August 21st, City Council sets dates for the budget and tax rate public hearing, and then submit notice to the newspaper regarding the city budget public hearing. And then September 5th, that's a Tuesday because the 4th is Labor Day, a public hearing for the budget. And that's the second public hearing. That's the one that's required by state law. The first one is not. This one is. And a tax rate public hearing setting the adoption date for the tax rate. And then September 18th is the big day that the adoption of the tax rate occurs as well as the budget. Those are some of the highlights. But you now have before you the budget calendar for this fiscal year. It's going to be an interesting year for the budget, but I want to make you aware of those dates. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to go to the Board and Commission appointments, which is for the Coastal Bend Foundation.
The city appoints two appointees to serve on the Coastal Bend Foundation. They are Jay Adaway and Karen Gale. The term expires for Mrs. Gale. She does want to be reappointed. She would serve a two-year term to May 31st, 2025.
I make a motion to reappoint Karen Gale to the Coastal Bend Foundation to expire May 31st, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now, we're going to go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member so requests. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I move to approve March 20th, 2023, and April 3rd, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now, we're going to go to citizen comments. So, that's where we're at right now. If any citizen wants to come up and have any discussion.
Mayor and Council, thank you so much. My name is Stephanie Diaz. My address is 249 West Harrison Boulevard. I'm here as a resident and a representative of the Police Department. It is disheartening to hear what a select few are saying about our Police Department and Fire Departments and the services that we provide. It is more disappointing when we have staff resign, like we did this weekend, because of the ugliness and hatred being blasted at city staff on social media. We don't want to lose any more staff, and I know you understand the difficulty we are having with trying to even hire for vacancies when we have a handful of naysayers trying to speak for the masses on social media. Not only does the vitriol on Facebook hurt our staff, but it significantly impacts our economy and drives potential residents and tourists to other areas. We take pride in the work that we do. We do it with our heart and take our jobs very seriously. Many staff don't even live here, yet we call this town our home. We also know the impact we have on others' lives. We know that we positively impacted the elderly woman whose husband nearly died recently, but our officers saved using CPR. We impacted the older female resident whose bicycle was recovered, the family that we filed a protective order to protect against further family violence, and the young child who was scared of police officers until we interacted with him last week at Earth Day, the property owners whose properties did not burn down during various brush fires as a result of hard work of our staff. Those are just a few examples, and I think you're probably aware of many more. As we all know, this is an important election to determine the direction the city will go. But what I want to be sure the public knows is that if our Police Department does not have the support of the public or of the City Council, we understand that is a sign that they no longer have faith in us. As a result, many of us will leave. We know the doctrine we have worked for, worked under for years now, and we believe in it. And if forced by City Council to go against everything we believe in and complete work that challenges our values and ethics, we don't do it.
Hold on a second. Mr. Followwell, you're disrupting the...
No, she is. I've always heard it be quiet several times.
No, you told me to shut up. The mayor asks you, and you will pipe down and listen to what the mayor's telling you to do, or you will leave.
Tell me, Mayor, I didn't hear you last time talking over here. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, now, we understand. So now, we're going to be quiet, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
I'm going to repeat the last few lines. As we all know, this is an important election to determine the direction the city will go. But what I want to be sure the public knows is that if our Police Department does not receive the support of the public or of the City Council, we understand that is a sign that they no longer have faith in us. As a result, many of us will leave. We know the doctrine we have worked under for years now and believe in it. And if forced by City Council to go against everything we believe in and complete work that challenges our values and ethics, we won't do it. If that happens, on paper, the crime rate will indeed go down, but that does not mean the actual amount of crime will go down. The remaining officers will definitely be responsive as needed, but there's no way they will be able to be proactive, as we've been able to do for so many years now. It has genuinely hurt my heart to see the amount of stress our staff is enduring during this time. We have individuals right now with their resignation letters typed up and ready to submit, some with over 15 years of experience. The bullying has to stop. The false accusations have to stop, and the hate has to stop.
I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
Those are your three minutes.
But it was interrupted by others.
I paused. I'm sorry, but I paused it.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Dawn Hild. I'm not a resident, but I am a business owner. I agree with everything that Stephanie has said. Moved here about opening my business in June, and the hate, the business has dropped, the traffic flow has slowed down because of all the hate and bullying and everything else that goes along with that. I mean, we have to do something about this. This is getting way out of hand. Nobody wants to come to our town because of what they read on social media. And I'm asking, I'm begging for somebody to do something about it. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, my name is Steve Sinovitz. I live at 4485 County Road 2211 in Odom, Texas, and I work at T. Baker Smith at 3854 FM 1069. I was a member of this year's Class 7 Leadership Class for the Chamber of Commerce. And as a member of that class, we had opportunities to do a lot of things around the community, including a ride-along with the Police Department. So I'd like to read a letter that I wrote to Chief Blanchard thanking the officer for that opportunity. "Chief Blanchard, as a member of this year's Chamber of Commerce Leadership Aransas Pass Class 7, I wanted to thank the Aransas Pass Police Department for the opportunity to participate in a ride-along exercise with Officer Ariel Perez from 7:00 to 11:00 PM on Wednesday, November 23rd, 2022. It was definitely an eye-opening and humbling experience, one that has left me with a much higher level of appreciation and respect for not only the variety of skill sets required of each officer, but also for the professionalism, patience, restraint, and experience that each member of the team brought to the variety of situations that occurred that evening. Officer Perez displayed a range of expertise throughout the evening, including serving to defuse a domestic dispute, community policing, discussions with citizens, apprehending a knife-wielding suspect, and assisting with chasing down a runaway DWI suspect. Teammate Erin Mendoza also displayed his expertise in the domestic dispute, the apprehension case, and in securing the runaway suspect via the spot-on use of his taser. Sergeant Justin Prado brought his experience, authority, professionalism, and guidance to these situations throughout the evening. The dispatcher serving that evening, whom I unfortunately did not obtain her name, was the voice behind the scenes throughout, helping officers with situational awareness as each incident developed. In addition, off-duty Harbor Safety and Enforcement Officer Jack McCarty, who is conducting personal business at Walmart at the time of one of the incidents, was at the right place at the right time to help quickly defuse a potentially escalating situation. All in all, I have heightened respect for your team of officers and dispatchers for their quick reactions to the variety of situations that occurred on the evening of my ride-along. Again, I thank you and them for the opportunity to have a better understanding and appreciation of what our community's officers go through on a regular basis."
Thank you.
Hi. I too am not a citizen of Aransas Pass.
Sandy, speak up.
Oh, I'm Sandy Blanchard, the chief's mother. Mr. Followwell and his followers have done a great disservice to these men and women who put their life on the line each and every minute of the day for this community. And it irks me as a mom to see my son being lied, falsely accused, and bullied. As far as I'm concerned, Mr. Followwell, you are nothing but a terroristic instigator. I have a gift for you, sir, and I probably won't take up all the time, but I'm going to give you some scripture. I know it doesn't mean anything to you, because I can tell by your quirky grin. We will all stand before the judgment seat of God, for the scripture says, "As surely as I live," says the Lord, "every knee will bow to me, and every tongue will declare allegiance to God. Yes, each and every one will give a personal account to God." Also, no one can tame the tongue. It is restless and evil, full of deadly poison. Sometimes it praises our Lord and Father, and sometimes it curses those who have been made in the image of God. And so blessing and cursing come pouring out of the same mouth. If you are wise and understand God's ways, prove it by living with a humility that comes from wisdom, which obviously a lot of people here don't have. But if you are bitterly jealous, which seems to be the problem, and there is selfish ambition, another problem, your heart, don't cover up the truth with boasting and lying, another problems. problems, for jealousy and selfishness are not of God's kind wisdom. Such things are earthly, unspiritual, demonic, which is very active, and for wherever there is jealousy and selfish ambition, there you will find disorder and evil in every kind. But the wisdom from above is first of all pure. It is also peace-loving, gentle at all times, and willing to yield to others. It is a full mercy and the fruit of the good deeds. It shows no favoritism. And if I have time, the last one is, you must, this is the greatest command. You must love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, and with all your mind. Upon this is the greatest commandment, but the second is to love your neighbor as yourself. And as Stephanie had said, I've seen all the hatred on Facebook coming out of this community by such a small percentage that keeps repeating everything over and over again, where kids are being bullied at school. Is that my time?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and Mr. Followwell. I just wanted to accept the Bible. He needs it, obviously.
I've read the entire Bible, ma'am, I know what it says.
Oh, no, you don't.
Okay, that's enough.
All right. I'm Melinda Williams, and I'm a proud local citizen since two thousand eight. I'm also a business owner of three divisions in this community, proudly so. I love Aransas Pass, and since I have come and Eric Blanchard has come and really, and Stephanie and, and Luca and Perez, I mean, I can go on and on. There's been different times in my life that I've actually, um, experienced the benefit of having a police department that has unity and heart. And I'm a lot. They have to hurt me sometimes, but I tell you what, I take it with, they do it with grace and dignity, and they hold their peace close to their chest. I'm gonna finish what Stephanie was up here saying before, uh, I was part of a rude disruption. It has genuinely hurt my heart, meaning I'm speaking of Stephanie, okay? It has genuinely hurt my heart to see the amount of stress our staff is enduring during this time. We have individuals right now with their resignation letters typed up and ready to submit, some with over fifteen years' experience. The bullying has got to stop. The false accusations have to go and stop. The hate has got to stop. If you don't love this town the way we do, then you leave. We don't want to, we truly have to, but we will for our families, for our families. When the children of our staff go home crying about threats they are hearing about their parents, what options do our staff have but to remove themselves from the situation for the sake of their family? It's God-family business, y'all. So, the best leadership in Aransas Pass, I agree, and I'm mirroring everything, I'm applauding everything that, that Stephanie and the staff has come up with, because it's no secret that I love this town and, and the way it's going, and I support EMS, but the best leadership in Aransas Pass within each city department and our council. I've shed many tears, I'm with you, sister, watching and knowing how upsetting and frustrating it is to deal with the vil, the vileness that has come, has become some of our residents. You have no clue how stressful this is on our chiefs, both PD and fire, but I am also not going to give those responsible credit for that by telling you how. To know how much this election has weighed on city staff is important, but it is more important to know, to note how much this city will suffer if things continue to get worse for us all. We have spent hundreds of hours responding to frivolous accusations, half-truths, and blatant lies.
Melinda, your, your three minutes are up.
Well, next one.
No, thank you.
Good evening, council, chief, Gary. My name is Irene Ari. I'm a lifetime member of this community. My dad was the chief of police here for twenty-nine years. I know what a police department is like. I was raised in it, riding in the ride-along as a young girl even. Eric Blanchard has brought this community to the twenty-first century. We are out of the dark ages. We have a police department that is first-class. They are dedicated, they love this community, just like I do. We need that. The evil that has come up in this town and some of these people sitting right here in this room aren't even from Aransas Pass. They are causing a lot of this evil, and I call it, excuse me, shit-stirring, um, and don't live here. It's not their deal, it's ours. And we need to step forward and support our department, our leadership in this community, as well as these men sitting behind, women sitting behind this desk. Thank you.
Hello, mayor, councilwoman, councilmen. My name is Olivia Hill. I am a local resident, school board member, and a business owner in this town. I wanted to come tonight to express my support and gratitude for our amazing police department and city staff, because I've done several projects here. We've had several situations where I have been proud to tell visitors, our police department has a two-minute response time if you call them. With everything going on in the country, it's so important for us to back our leaders, our law enforcement. Their jobs are dangerous enough. All of this turmoil, back and forth with social media, is a little childish. We're adults, I feel like we can come to a solution. I think the one thing everyone in this room can agree on is that we all want this town to move forward. We all want great things for Aransas Pass. That doesn't always look like what we each individually desire, but it's important for each of us to find that happy median so that we can learn to work together. I'm thankful for chief, we have one of the best safety protocols in South Texas in our school district, and that is highly thanks to the work of these people that you see all around us who constantly meet to protect our children. We are arguing over Facebook while people are burying their children every single day. People are getting gunned down in their communities every single day. People are having their homes broken into, and we're doing silly social media beef when we should be thanking God that we have these people protecting us, putting their lives on the line, and always stepping up for us every single day. So I just want to say thank you to you all, thank you for your service, thank you for your dedication, keep your heads up, we support you, we love you. This town will move forward, but we will do it together.
Mayor, city council, my name is Christina Beard. I'm a former employee of the City of Aransas Pass. I'd like to say I have great respect for all of the employees with the City of Aransas Pass, as well as the police and fire, um, in all departments. I'm the executive director of Public Housing now, the housing authority of Aransas Pass, and we depend on the good service that we get from our police department. It's very important to us. Uh, we've had several instances where we have had to call the police out, and we always have great support, and they always show up, and that's important to us. Thank you very much.
I'm James Sparks, I'm a local fishing guide, I live here in Aransas Pass. I've lived in this town for about ten years, eleven years, I've seen a lot of changes. What used to be pristine water is no longer pristine water. I watched our base system go from clean water to water you can't see in three inches in. The city council has failed to stop any dredging projects and local industry projects. I've seen a lot of things in this neighborhood I'm not proud of. When I moved here, it was a quiet town, you know, we could have a little campfire in our backyard, sit back and relax. Now I got meth ads going up and down the street on bicycles. One day I was up at Stripes, and it was about eleven o'clock at night, and walked up there, it's about a hundred yards up the street, and we ran out of beer. And I looked at the side, I'm like, you know what, that's a drug deal going on. I go up to the counter, I go, I think there's drug deal going on outside. She goes, yeah, we know, it happens all the time, they don't think we got cameras, PD don't do much about it, they don't do anything at all. You know, I watch, we have a prosecutor here, she's got fire from Porter Aransas, she's got fire from Corpus Christi. She takes a law, she twists it, picks out the parts she wants out of it. Like, I got a ticket for burning rubbish, and I got privacy fence in my front yard, I have a little wood stove, which, you know, sometimes we'll cook shrimp on, and, you know, we have a little fire in front of it. And I watched this lady take out the meaning of rubbish, because, you know, the word says rubbish parentheses, then it says trash. And, you know, trash, you're thinking old sightings, your trash can, stuff like that, not firewood. I asked one of our police officers, I was there at Tessa by, I said, according to this, if this ain't even burning, a tiki torch is illegal in this, you know, it's illegal in this city. I go, is it? He couldn't even answer it. You know, when you look at the towns of Rockport and you look at the towns of Ingleside, you see booming communities, Rockport, they got festivals going all the time. We have become the dumpster, the coastal bin, and the leadership has to change. It absolutely has to change, because times are getting tough. You see, and RV sales down this year, fifty-point-five percent, vacation's the first thing to go, people's taking the, you're tight, tightening the belts. Go down and type the shelly down in Cal Brown Harbor, she'll tell you, she's barely hanging on. People aren't booking trips, nobody wants to come down here and fish dirty water, because we have loud industry just to rip up and tear up, that's a slash of all the water in front of Aransas Pass. It boils down to you guys, it has to change. You guys, you know, you guys have been judged for what you've done, and we're the last dog in line, and nobody wants to come to a place that has nothing great going on. It has to change. Leadership has to change here today. Thank you.
Good job, buddy.
Oh, Jason Followwell, I guess Carrie would call me the devil publicly, even though she's a city council member, which I'm gonna sue you for, by the way. So I'll start with you, chief, what he just said, and Roxanne, I will talk to you too. What he just said was a rubbish code, and you don't know the law, Roxanne, pay attention. Rubbish code is actually, do you know what it is? Decayable material, not wood. And you tried to send that man to jail, and I told you about it, and you did nothing about it but crap on that man, that's why he's up here. Carrie, what'd you do last week? Went up to HEB and tried to get one of the partners fired for getting on Facebook and defending me. You know that's documented, right? Look at me like you're stupid, you know it's documented. Yeah, laugh, it's documented, don't tell me, no, it is documented, and I can get the documents. Ram, I'm gonna give you, I'm talking, you don't interrupt my three minutes. Sit there and be quiet. Ram, you are using a government official Facebook to rug your campaign. That's illegal. I know you don't understand charter, buddy, but that's illegal, I'll teach you one day how to read it. Chief Blanchard, we would all like to you to re, release the body cam feed of that woman that was tased in front of her kids. I'm not understanding why you won't release it. Show us the proof that you're talking about, that didn't happen the way you did, because you said, you said she got tased once, and you said she blocked traffic with a truck. Both of those were lies. Your son's a liar. Speaking of lying, you tore up a vet this weekend, you butchered him on Facebook, why? You put out information about his past that was not privileged to anybody but the police department, because he has no record. You did it on purpose, because he was defending against you. You're a tyrant. You're a political tyrant, and you need to go. I'm glad you're trying to look for work, I'm sorry you didn't make it to Victoria, but get the hell out of our town. Ram, do something about him. Gary, do something about him, he needs to go.
Thank you. I'm not going anywhere, I'm taking that man's job. We're gonna clean house.
Hello, everybody, my name is Mark Kenny, I do not live in the city, I live at fifty-five fifty-one FM ten sixty-nine. I do not have the capability of voting in this city, but I am the general manager of a restaurant here in town. First, I want to commend y'all, you, uh, have a tough job in front of all y'all. It's an elected thing, it's a thankless job, uh, and I commend all y'all for, uh, I want to make sure also that we have diplomatic society here where we can vote and do things, and vote new mayors, vote new council people, and do all the things that we do. But I demand to have professionalism in what we do, in my business. I demand first professionalism, and in that professionalism, we grow together as a family and as a group. If all y'all remember, we had hurricane come through about five years ago, what did we do? We all came together, and we all built this place back up as a family. Now, I'm sure that you have a lot of great things to add, I've seen some of the stuff you've had, I've seen some of the stuff that other people have had, but if we're not professional, we can't do the things. If I don't run my business professionally, I'm gonna go down, and I want everything to be professional, and I want people to act appropriately. How are you gonna, how are you gonna run the city or do things if you don't be professional in the things that you do? So if we don't learn to, to do things in love and do things the right way and build this community back the way it should be, yes, we all have problems. There's problems in everything that we do, I don't care if it's at home, I don't care if it's in the business, but we have to strive to make them better. And by spreading things across the internet and things that aren't true, that's not gonna help the matters at all. If you run the campaign the right way and you have all of your ducks in the road, you're gonna be where you need to be, just like in business. If you run your business the right way, you're gonna be where you need to be. So I want to thank all of y'all. I know there's a lot of building, a lot of things that we have to do, and a lot of things in this community that we have to rebuild. And I hope after this is all over with, we're able to rebuild and learn and grow from this. So I, I want to thank y'all for having, letting me have the opportunity.
My name is Chuck Solomon, and I represent a lot of vets. And this whole thing, what you did, posting stuff about his, somebody's past that, you already know for a fact he was found innocent, that should have never hit the internet. It's childish on your part, you want to talk about being childish. John Tig- Tiggen is actually doing a podcast about this tonight, so that hits nationwide. I mean, this is what this man has done for you guys, he's got a national war hero involved. Yet, you know who John Tig Tiggen is? Thirteen Hours, Benghazi, the book, the movie. Guy's very famous. And you, you know, you're a restaurant owner, I'm a restaurant owner. You had all those codes for how many years, and you want to talk about holding the law and everybody accountable? You weren't accountable for how many years until this year? That's not fair. That's using your political power that, that things go by by your inspectors. If I were to do that in our restaurant, we'd be shut down, fined. You weren't. Where's his fines for the five years that all those violations were in effect? That's not right. Do your job. Just because he's your mayor, you didn't want to write him a fine, didn't want to raid him? Over a pallet and a couple other things? Man, come on. You can sit there and laugh under your hand all you want, I'm watching from the outside as a business owner in this county, and it's bullcrap. I mean, and what she did going in the HEB, oof. Oh, yeah, we already know, we got it documented, so. I mean, there's other things that you guys are doing. You should have never defamed a, a, a vet the way you did. I'm gonna hold it at that. You're a coward.
Mayor.
Amen.
Response for clarification on some of that comments. I just want to point out for everybody that's paying attention.
You can't speak in citizen comments? You can't speak in citizen comments?
Yeah, yeah, he can.
Then he needs to come up there for charter.
No. He don't have, he can, he can do citizen comments right, right?
Mayor, staff.
If I want to do citizen comments, I can do them from right here. Ain't no difference, it's the same mic.
I'm offering clarification as to the comment that's made, which is a staff privilege that's allowed if you allow it, mayor. May I?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Just to point out for, uh, a fact and clarification, the mayor has been issued citations, and even under my direction, and has paid those violations.
Nick, Nick, that's enough, guys.
So I'm gonna finish, my name's Doug Grazens, um, I'm a resident of Aransas Pass, I live over on DeBarry, I'm also the director of the Redford Ranch Foundation, which, I'm gonna talk to you guys a little later about that. But, uh, the rest of the letter says, "We've spent hundreds of hours responding to frivolous accusations, half-truths, and blatant lies that has costing residents thousands and thousands of taxpayer dollars for us to simply get the whole truth out there. I'm personally striving to turn the other cheek to pray for my enemies and continue doing God's work in every interaction I have." Matthew five forty-four tells us, "When I tell you, 'Love your enemies,' bless those who curse you; do good to those who hate you, and pray for those who mistreat you and persecute you." Council, believe me when I tell you I'm there. Steph.
Anybody else?
Mayor, council, my name is David Fluger, reside at eighteen-thirty West DeBarry. I'm not a longtime resident of Aransas Pass, I'm four years, five I'm four years, five years this October. Thirty-two years retired US Army Lieutenant Colonel, twelve years as a Texas State Trooper. I don't get myself involved in a lot of things, because once retired, I like to stay retired. But that doesn't mean I'm not circling overhead with an Overwatch. In my variety of experiences, which are well documented and credentialed, I have seen this town in the past twenty-three years, because I came down here as a visitor before I became a resident. I've seen it come out of the mule and plow days to the John D. Three Thousand Series tractor days. You've come ahead. You've come a long way. And I will say from a professional standpoint on law enforcement and administration, in the dealings that I've had with several of the departments in the city, I have found that there is no lack of desire to attempt to do the right thing and to do it correctly as public servants. Not looking for laudatory honors or congratulations, but simply putting your shoulders to the grindstone and doing the job. I will say from a professional law enforcement standard, which I have a lot of experience in dealing with multiple agencies, both from a military and a civilian standpoint, that this agency has come, within the last five years alone, into a brilliant position among the agencies along the coastal bend. Previously, there was no inter-agency communication. It was like being in foreign countries. Rockport, Ingleside, Portland, the county. I have a number of associates that are still in law enforcement or involved on the collateral side, who have transitioned civilian roles that work with the law enforcement. I get the comments. I see and I hear. And I will commend your department on being probably one of the most professional departments this side of the DPS in the area. Thank you for your time.
My name is Sandra Gashfi. I don't live here, but I do work for the city of Aransas Pass. I'm the Director of Finance for the city, and I've, I debated about coming up here, but I've, I've read a lot of postings on Facebook, a lot of miscommunication, a lot of things that have been said incorrectly. When Harvey hit, people don't really realize the financial position the city was in. I personally had to call our vendors to let them know that we were not gonna be able to pay their bills, but we also needed their supplies and their services. And that was a very difficult and embarrassing call for me to make. We were not in a financial position that we are right now. The team, that when I started here, Gary came on board, really unified and brought the whole city staff, directors, everybody together, to make a cohesive team, to work very hard. And in the past couple of months, in the past six, seven, eight months, I have seen people try to tear down and belittle and to break that down to a point that we're no longer a team. And it's very hard, it's very hard to, I, today I went into Gary's office and said, we need to do something for staff. Our morale is very low. Our employees are very low. They feel like we're not speaking up for them, and maybe we shouldn't be speaking up for them, but just because posts on Facebook go out there and we don't respond, doesn't mean that your posts are correct. It just means that we're choosing to take the high road and not respond, because we are not allowed to respond in a way that you should be responded to. And I'm, I'm just here saying that there is a lot of miscommunication, there's a lot of misunderstanding, and I agree with what Mark said. We need to learn to get along, to be able to govern, to be able to move on. Aransas Pass has so much potential. We have so much room to grow. Our sales tax is growing. Our houses, our residents are growing, the population is growing here in town, and we cannot afford to be set back and go back to the pre-Harvey days, where we were paying, we were on cash basis with some of the vendors, where we had to make a decision literally if we were gonna do accounts payable or we were gonna run payroll. Those are very hard decisions to make, and those are very hard times, and I don't want us ever to go back to that. Thank you.
I'm Donald Volz, I am a citizen here. I live at thirteen oh one West Greenwood. So all the thing I can really speak to is my personal experience. So probably about five or six years ago, Eric approached me, because I'm a pastor here in town. Eric approached me about being the chaplain for the police department. I come from a long line of law enforcement. And I get really concerned in our country today, because they're, our first responders are under attack, defunding police departments, doing everything we can to try to discredit them. I'm very concerned about that. So in my years as a chaplain of the police department, and being on the crime board the same number of years, I've seen nothing but complete integrity. And that's just what I've seen. Complete integrity on behalf of our first responders. And I wanna give a huge shout out also to our fire department. A few years ago, I kinda went through that stage of life when my parents got that age and, and my mom passed away in December of two thousand sixteen, my dad back in April of two thousand seventeen. And I cannot tell you, basically, they got to the place where I had to move in with them and, and I was their primary caregiver. And there were times that I had to have help. And to be able to call nine-one-one and have the response time that we did, I mean, I would have firefighters, EMTs, most of the time the firefighters get there first, and they're all trained EMTs. And I tell you, it's, it's a great feeling to be in a situation I was in and have professional support show up immediately. So all my experience with our first responders, I, I give them A-plus. They've just, they've just been excellent. I mean, nobody's perfect and nobody's beyond criticism, but I'm just simply saying, my experience with them as a longtime citizen, it's just been a lot to me, knowing that I call nine-one-one from the dispatchers, if it was fire department EMTs or police department, those guys are on the spot. And I'm thankful for, I'm thankful for y'all's service.
Yes, I do live in Ingleside, just so everybody's aware. I grew up in Aransas Pass. I lived here for almost thirty years. My mom still does. I went to preschool in Aransas Pass, graduated from high school in Aransas Pass. I still have an interest in what goes on in this community. But I'm not here today to speak about petty politics that's going back and forth on Facebook. What I'm here to talk about today is a fellow disabled veteran named Mr. William Ledger, and how incredibly sad it is that he is without his service animal today, because the police department is refusing to do the right thing. You know that that's his dog, you know that that's his service animal, and give him the animal back. That's the heart of the issue here, but what I really wanna speak on is the letter that the police chief wrote to Mr. Ledger and released onto social media. It was incredibly unprofessional, and it's absolutely obvious that that was pure intimidation, and it's just disgusting. This man and his family have suffered tremendously with nonstop harassments and canceled business contracts over the last few days because of what the chief did in his open letter. You should have reached out to him personally, especially if you weren't sure if he was the same person that you mentioned in there. But I find that very hard to believe. You dropped two names, you knew exactly who he was, and you knew exactly what you were doing. Your sole point in doing what you did was to get that name out there, knowing that people on social media were going to run with it and do your dirty work for you. And man, did they do a good job. This veteran has lost his livelihood with numerous canceled contracts for his business, all thanks to an open letter to him from the chief that was posted on social media that should have been a private matter between you and him. It was incredibly petty and unprofessional, unprofessional, and I hope it comes back to bite you in the end.
Hector Rios, ten forty-four South Commercial. I'd first like to really thank everybody here. This is the first time I've ever seen it this crowded, and I'm so happy and so proud to be here today. This is we, the people. This is not we, the most powerful, we, the most rich, we, the most popular. It's we, the people. And thank you so much for being here. I greatly appreciate it. I'm very proud to be here in Aransas Pass. I own a business. You know, I've seen a lot of things come and go, and it's been great. And I've been coming to a lot of these meetings, and I do remember a time when I think if we would all just sat down and tried to talk it out, I think at one time all, Jason asked for it, was an apology. I think that would have been real easy a year ago, instead of letting this escalate like this. I just really felt that somebody should reach out a little bit more, and if you did reach out, you should have done a little bit more to solve this a long time ago. Now we're gonna have to wait for the end of a lawsuit, for everything to come out in the laundry, when it could really, probably ended with a little communication, a little bit of togetherness, a little bit of love. And I'm really sad to see it's gonna come to this point, and our town's being torn up by something like this. I kinda support Mr. Falwell, just because as a fellow business owner, we need the businesses. I don't know what's going on, right or wrong. I'm waiting for the final verdict. I'm waiting for it to go to court. That's when I'm gonna have to go with the decision that's gonna be made by my peers. Police Department, I love what they do. I've been up here many, many times stating that I want our police officers to be the highest paid police officers in the entire country. I've said that several times at several meetings. But I think we, we, as a council, as we, the people, maybe we should have tried a little bit more to try to de-escalate this a year ago. But I, I understand y'all's, y'all's point, y'all's side, I totally agree with what already I finally agreed with. I totally support you there. I tell you that every single time before I leave this podium, that I appreciate you, God bless you, and I love each and every one of you. Thank you.
I'm a fossil from another era. My name is Jay Masterson. I live at one twenty Misty Lane. I've been here since nineteen seventy-seven. I've had, I've buried a veteran husband. I'm a veteran. I've worked here as an employee of the council of governments for sixteen years. I have been a volunteer driver. I've worked nights and weekends. And my experience in working with forty-four governments for sixteen years is that Aransas Pass has come such a far distance from when I first came here. And I was sad to say, ashamed to even say what my, what town I was in. And I will tell you, the amount of, has been accomplished here in the period of time that I've been here, has been phenomenal. And I have been extraordinarily impressed with the administration, with the law enforcement, but most of all, with an attitude that you can achieve things without having to put yourselves in the same category as our poor folks in Oasis County or in Portland. Being independent is extraordinarily difficult when you live in an area where there's a lot of pressure. The people who are sitting in this room care deeply about Aransas Pass. Some of us who've been on the inside for many years understand that the battles that you fight are not the ones you get credit for. The times that you have to be hopped nights and weekends trying to find a way through, nobody knows the struggles that you have. I was blessed to work with a thousand law enforcement officers. And I'll be honest with you, the people here in Aransas Pass are top-notch by comparison to even those. So I feel very thankful that I'm allowed to live here, that I don't have to be in a friggin' nursing home just because I'm afraid. Okay? Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was in the service. Anyway. But, but the most important thing that you all need to hear is that conflict is part of growth. There's nothing wrong with the fact that there are people who have different opinions. What we have to keep in mind is there's bigger fish out there to fry, and there's a lot of people gunning for the, the nice, beautiful spots along the coast. Because of my work, I'm aware of the fact that the little city of Beaumont sold themselves out to foreign interests. Yeah, they got development, but they paid a hell of a price for it. And I want to let you know, I was not one of those people that was in favor of what you were trying to do back in two thousand and six. Some of the people would be surprised hearing me come and be so supportive of the city, because I was against what some of the things that were going on.
Ms. Masterson, your three minutes are up.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You take care.
Hi, Council. I'm Russ Kilgore, seven forty-five South Whitney. I'm gonna speak on, have these, Fire Department, EMS, Police Department, they do a great job. I've worked with them for many, many, many years. I've been here over forty years, almost forty-five years, to be exact. I come down here, my first job here, worked for City of Aransas Pass, worked for Public Works. I transferred over to Fire Department. Worked there for thirty-two years before I retired. And I worked with many, many, many calls with all these officers and firefighters. And I support every one of them, and the city staff as well, and the city council. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Okay, well, I declare the comments over. We're gonna go to public hearings, and I'm gonna open up the public hearing on case number CC two-three-zero-five-dash-zero-three, right-of-way abandonment of East Blossom Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This application is a right-of-way closure, and it is a portion of the East Blossom Avenue which covers the very endpoint toward the railroad tracks to the east. This is part of the property that is under renovation by the property owner McDonald and Sons LLC. They currently own the Donnell RV Park. They are doing an extension, and they want to close that portion so that it will be part of the whole RV park. The red portion showing on the screen is the right-of-way. It is approximately five hundred feet long and eighty feet wide. And the applicant is here to answer questions that you may have. Planning Department recommends approval of this application. Thank you.
I wanna point out, Mayor and Council, that staff is not totally in agreement with the approval, but wanted to make you aware of that before we got further into the discussion. Thank you.
You need any questions?
My name's Bill Aberback. I'm at three-one-five West Guile Avenue here in Aransas Pass. I'm very familiar with abandements like this, and I think it's a good thing. But at the same time, I wanted, I just wanted to remind everybody that the, that this piece of land is in the ESA District One, environmentally sensitive area District One, and it should be considered as something to, it should be looked into and possibly, I don't know if it would involve having a ESA study done, but it seems like right now, a lot of, a lot of properties are not, are being clear-cut or cleared with, because the owners didn't know that it was in ESA District. And everything east of Commercial, on the north end of town, is in ESA District. So I just wanted to make that obvious, clear, that this was the case. I mean, I, I have, I bought a house and property, and it wasn't until this year that I found out it was in an ESA District, the same, the same one. And so, and I know that there's lots of wildlife on it, but this is ESA, environmentally sensitive area, doesn't just refer to wildlife, animals and plants. It involves a lot more. It involves the community. It involves the community. It's part, that's part, part of the environment is the effect on the community. So that's all I want to say. I just want to let everybody know that it's in ESA District One, like so much others. And it, maybe you guys can, maybe you can find a way to make it obvious to everybody who owns land there that this is, that these are ESA Districts and need to be treated differently than non-ESA Districts, especially if they're not residential. If it's, if it's not zone residential, then it seems like there would be even more concern about how it was going to be developed. Okay? That's it. Thank you. You're doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Sinovitz with T. Baker Smith. With me tonight is Suzanne Cox. She's one of the managers of the Donnell RV Park and is representing McDonald &amp; Sons. Also here with T. Baker Smith is Alan Curley. He's a registered public land surveyor, and he prepared the exhibit for the vacate. I do want to address the comment about the environmentally sensitive area. McDonald &amp; Sons has hired T. Baker Smith to do design, and that includes addressing the environmentally sensitive area. So we are actually working on that report right now, and we'll be submitting that to the Development Department for review, and then, of course, to the ESA Committee. We're here to answer any other questions that anybody might have about, about the development, about the plans, about the visions. So, thank you.
So, are y'all going to be expanding the RV park? Is that the plan?
The existing park is in the central part of their property. It's 13 and a half acres. Just to the south of Blossom, the red area, is a southern section. They're going to be expanding into that. Right now, it's mostly grass turf in the central part and some woodlands in the eastern part of that. And then on the northern third, also, that's kind of existing kind of grass turf area. There's a pond there, but there'll be some expansion to the west of that pond area, north of existing cabins.
Okay. Not necessarily for you, Steve, maybe for the rest of us. We've come across lately a lot of right-of-way abandonments. And I, I think I would like to table this one only because we, we've just been giving all of this land away, and it actually belongs to the city. So I'm thinking-
How about we just sell it?
The, that's certainly an option, but I-
That's a, that's a pretty good size.
But we have so many others, too, and it's going to eventually become a very large amount of land.
The reason there's a disagreement amongst staff, and staff has had meetings on this particular issue, and all these arguments are wonderful, and they're accurate, and they're good arguments. However, for the reason that you bring up, we are, this is going to an undeveloped area right now, and we're abandoning roads that we may need in the future. That's been staff's position on this. We may want to consider keeping it a while longer and seeing how development occurs and see if an abandonment is advisable. That's one of the positions staff, who is opposed to the recommendation to approve, that the other staff members have taken, just for your information.
I would like to address that if I could, yes. So this is an original plat of the city of Aransas Pass. It's from the 1800s. And there is a, a large swath of land that's called Railroad Reserve. That was originally set up for the, back then, it was San Antonio and Aransas Pass Railroad. Now it's the Union Pacific Railroad. Part of that, that land has been sold off. McDonald &amp; Sons owns pieces of that. Blossom Avenue does not cross the railroad. It goes up to the railroad right-of-way. It also doesn't connect with the Blossom Avenue that's over between the railroad and the levee. The National Wetlands Inventory Maps, if you look, this whole area in green, that's to the east of the railroad. That's all wetlands. It's also in the Zone A flood plain, which is an eight-foot elevation. There's also, of course, you would have to, the city would have to buy the land to cross over to connect to Blossom Avenue of the east, which is a wetland. And then they're going to need to get permission from the Union Pacific Railroad to put in a crossing. They have a crossing at Maddox already and at Stapp. The city has platted North Railroad Street, which runs from Maddox north into this area. But again, if someone wants to develop this in the future, they would have to get Corps of Engineer permits, wetlands delineations that have to be above the storm surge. In my opinion, it's not a very viable piece of property to develop east of the railroad. So the premise that we're going to hang on to this because there could be some future development east of the railroad seems to be challenging at best. That, that right-of-way's been there for 150 years, and nobody's ever done anything with it. So we have a developer right now that can develop the property they're at without having discontinuous pieces of property, and that's all they're asking, to take that, that 80-foot wide strip of land out of the middle of their property. So hopefully that clarifies a little bit about that concern.
Well, if it was up to me, the only thing east of the railroad would be a nature preserve back there because of the wetland areas and the, and the beautiful marshy areas. And I know that's such a big area for birds and wildlife back there. So I would hope that there was not anything back there except a nature preserve. But as far as abandoning that road, I'm just, I'm just concerned about all of the other abandonments that we've, we've done and that we have before us, that maybe we should start selling this to the owners instead of just giving them that's a large piece of land.
I agree with you. Why don't we table it and do some more looking into this?
I would like to table it and talk about it some more.
We'd be happy to provide more information after that tabling. Sure. Thank you.
I make a motion to table, oh, sorry. Okay.
Any other, any other questions or any concerns? Okay, now, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and now we're going to go to Consider an Act on Ordinance Upon Request by McDonald &amp; Sons LLC for abandoning a .897-acre portion dedicated public right-of-way of East Blossom Avenue, beginning at the east border of the alley, east of the Commercial Street, extending to the railroad right-of-way measuring eight feet, 80 feet in width and approximately 189 feet in length at the center line in Aransas County, Texas, as depicted in plat and meets and bounds description of said closure. Exhibit A and B attached hereon to, heretofore, and providing for revision of said abandoned area to the abutting properties. Now you can do that.
I make a motion to table this ordinance request by McDonald &amp; Sons for abandoning the right-of-way at Blossom Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're going to go to Consider an Act on the Insurers of a Request for Proposals for Retail Energy Provider.
Mayor and Council, the city, this is related to TXU. The city currently has a contract with TXU Energy that's due to expire later this year. This will allow us to go out for bid for the best possible rate for the residents of the city. That's what that comes down to. Staff recommends approval.
I make a motion to act on a resolution of the city of Aransas Pass, Texas, finding that AEP Texas-
Oh, boy, okay. I can tell you, my nerves are shattered at this point, but, you know, we persevere and we move on. All right. I will make a motion to act on the issuance of an RFP for retail energy provider.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're going to go to Consider an Act on Resolution of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, finding that AEP Texas Incorporated's application to amend its distributed distribution cost recovery factors to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied authorizing participation with the city served by AEP Texas, authorizing hiring of legal counsel, finding that the city's responsible, reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, require notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
This, this, on April 5th, AEP filed an application with the Public Utility Commission to amend their distribution cost recovery factor to increase their distribution rates, which translates to about $1.63 of an increase to the average residential customer. So the resolution that you have before you does two things. One, it denies the application that's proposed by AEP. And then, two, to hire the law firm of Lloyd Gosling to represent Texas Cities to negotiate with the company and come up with some reasonable rates. So the resolution that you have before you is to deny the application.
At a loss of whatever, okay. So I make a motion to deny the resolution of the city of Aransas Pass, Texas, finding that AEP Texas' application to amend its distribution cost recovery factors to increase distribution rates within the city.
Second.
Deny.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now, we're going to go to Consider an Act and Approve of a Contract with Gulf Coast Geographic Services LLC to provide analytical GIS services to be effective from May 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2023, not to exceed $7,200.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to approve a contract between the city and Gulf Coast Geographic Services for GIS services. Ever since we lost the contract with EDC, that Maxans was in charge of it, we've not been able to do any GIS updates. And so this is a proposal that we get into a contract with Gulf Coast to replace that services for us. And this is what is before you. The consultant is here with us today. If you have any other questions, he can be available to answer them for you. Thank you.
Could you just explain to everybody what the GIS services are?
Yes, it's going to be-
Could you come up here, could say, we got the video on, so.
The basic gist is to update and maintain the city's geographic data and produce deliverable maps depicting that data. So, for instance, if a, if there's a change to zoning or jurisdictional boundaries, updating and, and maintaining that data, do that effect. Also, general support for city business, such as notification of landowners within a certain, certain radius of an affected property in the event of a zoning change. That's a good example of the sort of services that-
That's good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve a contract with Gulf Coast Geographic Services LLC to provide analytical GIS services to be effective from May 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2023, not to exceed $7,200.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're going to, we're going to go to Community and Richmond, which is Consider an Act on Request from Doug, Doug Grissons-
Graysons.
Redford Ranch Foundation for the use of shrimpery grounds for a barbecue cook-off competition from September 21st through September, from the 24th, 21st to the 24th of 2023.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Mayor Ram was just outlining, this request is for use of the shrimpery grounds for a barbecue cook-off fundraising event in September. The timeframe that is being sought for approval is the evening of Thursday, the 21st, through Sunday, the 24th. They would be loading in vendors and participants lightly on Thursday, primarily on Friday. This Market Days Fair-type event would take place on Saturday, and then, of course, cleanup and load-out would be on Sunday. This particular event would like to carry on the legacy and the name from previous barbecue cook-off fundraisers, Smoke on the Water. And it would be benefiting three groups, primarily this organization, Redford Ranch Foundation, targets supporting our military personnel and first responders as they cope with some of the challenges and difficulties that are incumbent with their roles and the high stress that those incur. For this event, the beneficiaries would be the Blue Pony Stables, who offer equestrian therapy services, Objective 22, offering fishing trips, again, for the said groups. And also, proceeds would go towards our Aransas Pass Fire Department. We would be meeting, if you would, once, perhaps if you pass this item, we would be meeting after this to secure any further details on the use of the land, but staff's recommendation is for approval.
I make a motion to approve Doug Grayson's Redford Ranch Foundation for use of shrimpery grounds for a barbecue cook-off competition from September 21st through the 24th of 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yay.
Now, we're going to go to Consider-
Thank you, Doug.
We actually have the gentleman here who is making the request.
Doug, would you, you want to come up and introduce yourself to everybody?
Again, my name is Doug. I'm the director of the Redford Ranch Foundation. I was in the Marine Corps for four years. I served to Iraq in a combat tour, 2007, 2008. My story's a long, a long one, but my life was saved out in those flats out there with a group called Heroes on the Water in kayak. And I fought really hard to come back to this area, and I want to bring something special to this area. We're working on, we just got to prove our, our design and rendering donated, and we're going to have a design firm fly on, fly down next month to view the property we have. The goal, ultimate goal is to bring a wellness center to this area that serves veterans, first responders, and their families. So if you have any questions or anything, feel, feel free to contact me, and I'd love to sit with you all and talk to you about our plans and what we got going on. I hope to unveil the design and rendering at this fundraiser.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go to Consider an Act on Approval of Request from the Aransas Pass for Youth for Sponsorship of the Aquatic Center in their seven-week program on Tuesday from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. from July 12, 23 through July 25, 2023.
Mayor and Council, this is a routine item that we bring before you. The Aransas Pass for Youth has been partnering with the city for several years now to bring this item to our local children. It is of great benefit to these kiddos. It offers them something positive to do during the summertime, and our team at the Aquatic Center and other teams in the city are, are very happy to work with this group to provide this service to our local kids. So the dates, again, are listed on that memo. It's a number of weeks, I believe, every Tuesday, seven weeks every Tuesday. Of course, this is something we can facilitate through the Aquatic Center with your approval. Staff recommends approval.
I make a motion to approve the request from the Aransas Pass for Youth for sponsorship of the Aquatic Center in their seven-week program on Tuesdays from 11:00 to 4:00, from June 13th to July 25th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're going to go to Development Services. Consider an Act and Approve a Dirt Road Extension of West Myrtle Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know last Monday, we had a discussion item about the Myrtle Extension. The dirt road is from Avenue A, eastbound, about 800 feet is already a dirt road, and from after that, it becomes like beach sand. So this recommendation is actually an action item now to actually, to extend an additional 800 feet. We will be paying it out of our tax note. We do have a line item for streets that we're going to use to pave Gillespie, Ransom, 10th Street, and I believe there's another street in there. And we do have a little money left over that we can actually extend this road. So if you have any questions, I'd be-
What'd you find out about a water line?
Okay, so I did see about the water line. I'm still looking into the sewer because the sewer's a little bit more complicated because we have to upgrade our lift station by Public Works to be able to run the sewer that way. So I'm, I'm going to be presenting that in the budget workshop.
Okay. All right, thanks, David.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the dirt road extension of West Myrtle Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we're gonna go... Okay, now we're gonna go to consider an act on issuance of request for proposals for the city portion of the Sherwood Forest Sewer Project.
As you were, uh, on, in August, you guys approved for the contractor to begin construction on Sherwood Forest area. So it was Sherwood, Gina Lane, Marshall, Benoy, Denopat, Owens Lane, and I feel like I'm missing one more, but basically that area. So the contractor was basically doing Oak Lane was the other road. So the contractor was doing Oak Lane, Gina Lane, and Sherwood Forest. Well, in-house, we were gonna do the Denopat, Benoy, Marshall Lane, and Owens Lane. Uh, those, those are the, the sewer that's a little bit, basically six foot and shallower from there. The material's gonna exceed our procurement limit, our threshold, so I'm coming forward to you to get permission to go for RFP, to advertise and get a supplier to, uh, give us a price sealed bids on the material that we're gonna need, the manholes and the pipe that, that's gonna be needed for this project. So right now, it's just basically permission to let us, uh, seek some bids.
All right. I make a motion to act on the issuance of a RFP for the city portion of the Sherwood Forest Sewer Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we're gonna go to consider an act on issuance of request for proposal for a truck, a truck scale at the Aransas Pass Transfer Station.
So right now, currently in the transfer station, we're charging residents based on trailer loads. And of course, we set a fixed fee and we have residents putting up plywood as high as they can, filling up that, filling it to the, to the max, bringing it over and, and that, that's how it's been oper- operating for, for quite a while. This right here is for an RP to get a truck scale. So this one, it's gonna be big enough to, we can have, drive up with a, kinda like you see in the landfill. You're just gonna go up in a ramp, uh, you're gonna weigh heavy, empty out, weigh empty, and then the difference is what, what you'll be paying. So right now, it's just RFPs. Again, we're just trying to get permission to go off for bids to get a truck scale. The truck scale does exceed our threshold, uh, procurement threshold, so, um, right now, it's just permission to get bids.
And this scale is to be able to make sure that what we're paying for to dispose of is what we're gonna get paid for whenever it goes in there and gets dumped in those dumpsters.
Yes, exactly. Because us, we get billed per, on weight. So we're charging residents per truckload. Who knows how much weight they're putting, but then when we, when we go dispose of it, we're being charged per weight. So this one will at least make it apples to apples.
And we'll still have the vouchers in place, right?
Yes, that, that won't go away. We're just, just a method of, of billing and overcharging.
Did you have something, Melinda?
Yes, there was one on Melinda Williams. Uh, I wanted to know how big the scale was gonna be, if it was gonna be for ten-wheelers, you know, that type of thing, I think max, or even eighteen-wheelers. I, um, so we can kinda get an idea of where the money's gonna go, or how much money it's gonna take.
Sure. It's a thirty-five-foot scale, so we're not gonna be able to do eighteen-wheelers, but it would be able to do a truck and more likely a sixteen to eighteen-foot trailer on there. So all we need to do is make sure the tires are on there, so even though the truck and the trailer might extend for the thirty-five feet, as long as we can get the tires in there. So it'll just be, I guess you call it more domestic dumping than commercial dumping.
All right. I'm, uh, make a motion to act on the issuance of an RFP for a truck scale at the Aransas Pass Transfer Station.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I did have a quick little comment. I just wanted to ask about the road for, um, this part of... Um, so I understand, um, the talking, uh, with the, with Gary here, that in order to get a paved road and get the water and the sewage, I mean, definitely the dirt road is the win. I really appreciate it. But June's like right around the corner. It's next month. So what do we have to do to move forward to get that added on to the budget for the June meeting?
Well, it's not in the budget now, so if you'll give us some time to talk amongst ourselves with finance and Public Works and, uh, and we can address your issue probably within about a week or so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, now we're gonna go to the workshop meeting, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, Mayor and Counsel, we have three items right now. As you know, this is, uh, fluid and this changes, but right as, as of this moment, the three items are an update on residential homes at city entrances. We indicated we could get back with you with more information. The amendment to Con Brown Harbor overlay ordinance, there's some things in, uh, Con Brown Harbor that are occurring right now that are not in the overlay, and this is brought to our attention by Carrie Scruggs. It may be necessary to update that, and, uh, that would be the reason for that discussion. The final one is something that, um, several of you, and I know at least, uh, Carrie and Jason, have been approached on dealing with, um, uh, short-term rentals and some concerns by neighbors where, uh, short-term rentals, uh, are either under construction or soon will be under construction, and the neighbors had some concern. We have, um, very little as far as, uh, legislation to, uh, work with on when it comes to short-term rentals, and I wanna talk about that and, uh, bring in that meeting, uh, decide on some direction to go with short-term rentals. Uh, it's gonna be more of an issue as time goes by. It's gonna be a major issue for us, so we need to start addressing it now. Some of you have been bringing this forward on earlier occasions, and staff has also, the city attorney has, uh, so we want to have, um, begin some in-depth discussions to decide where we wanna go with this for protection of citizens and the protection of the city also. So that's what it'll be about.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to executive...
Mayor, can I say something before you go in there? Um, this has to do with executive session, with only being six days till the election, and the landscape of the council may or may not, may or may not change. And would you entertain a motion to table this executive session item until the next regular council meeting?
I'm not following that. That's fine, it's a, it's a good idea. But, um, on the twenty-second, uh, there, if there is gonna be a change, that change will be in place already. Uh, so if you want to, if, if there is a change, it could simply be canceled, uh, at the, at the meeting on the fifteenth. That's some, another way to look at it. If that's, I don't know where you're going with that, but, uh, um, if that's what the goal, I'm not following the goal.
I was kinda wanting, seeing if we could postpone the executive session until the next regular, this executive session.
Oh, this, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the, uh...
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
No.
Yeah, I thought you meant the STRs, I mean, uh, yeah, short-term rentals.
Okay, that's, that's up to y'all.
No, I say no.
Okay.
Oh, we need to go through with it now.
Mayor, there, there's another item under City Council announcements. There was another item on the, the welcome, I mean, the community welcome.
Sure.
Before the executive session, it was, uh, the second quarter, um, community welcome. It's thirteen, item thirteen-two.
Second quarter, community, community welcome, May eighteen, twenty twenty-three at five-thirty PM, Ms. Cate.
Mayor and Counsel, again, uh, this was just a quick announcement to let everyone know that we will be having our second, uh, quarterly community welcome meeting. It will take place on May eighteenth, starting at five-thirty. Be the same location, at the Civic Center. Uh, we will have some, several departments participating. We will, we will be opening that to also businesses who wanted to come and participate. And it's really just an opportunity for, uh, community members to come in, talk to department heads, different departments, ask, ask questions, get answers. Um, we will be taking the opportunity to introduce our concepts and, um, goals for the Parks and Recreation Department as well. If you have any questions or would like to participate, let me know.
Now back to...
All right. Now, executive session.
Okay, we're gonna go into executive session, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter and put the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas Disciplined Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act and section five-five-one dot zero-eight-seven deliberations regarding economic development negotiations relating to commercial contract with Six Thirty Ransom Island Partners LLC for unimproved property, Nuaceus CAD number three-eight-zero-three-one-zero-eight twenty-eight point six-one acres of land in Ransom Island, crack seven, commonly known as Six Thirty East Ransom Road, Aransas Pass, Texas, and that is six fifty-four.
Before we go, just a quick question, um, on the matter of that, were you making a motion that you made, you did it?
Yes.
So then, you know, no second motion?
Okay. Okay.
Alright.
Now we go.
We're going to reconvene in open session to consider that and take action if any on any item, discuss in executive session. And it is, hello, seven twenty-three.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve a letter of intent with Six Thirty Ransom Island Partners LLC relating to Nuaces CAD number three eight zero three one zero, twenty-eight point sixty-one acres of land on Ransom Island Track Seven, commonly known as Six Thirty East Ransom Road or Ransus Pass, Texas.
Okay.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have to vote no because I felt this should have been tabled and placed on the next rigor council meeting.
Okay. Motion carried. Okay. Uh, attorney?
Make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.